Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for pledge allegiance and the invitation following.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
Lefour?
Here.
Stravich?
Here.
Reindeau?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Schultz?
Warren?
Here.
Motion to accept, Councilor Schultz, from tonight's meeting being ill.
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and support. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Approval of minutes for the city council meeting of March 18th. Motion be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and support. Any discussion on the minutes? Be not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. If anybody'd like to address city council on non-agenda items, now would be the time. We'd ask that you just come up here, use the microphones so the people at home are going to be able to hear you, state your name and address. Otherwise, when we come to the items for consideration, we will go to the public after our comment here at the table. Okay, we move on, adoption of agenda. Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? Motion accept the agenda as presented would be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and support. Any discussion on it? Be not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration. This evening, we have six. The first one is consideration of adopting resolution 2024-4, brownfield redevelopment for the Wendy's restaurant. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving resolution 2024-4, a resolution of support for a proposed brownfield plan for property located at 66942 Grashit Avenue. Macomb County has an established brownfield redevelopment authority that can incorporate projects from communities within Macomb County rather than have each community set up their own brownfield redevelopment authority. As part of the process, the county first checks with taxing authorities such as the city to get their input on an application. The attached resolution provides Macomb County with our recommendation on the proposal. Once the county receives the input from all of the taxing authorities, the county's brownfield authority meets to determine the final approval. Macomb County and the city recently received an application from Fishbeck on behalf of Meritage Hospitality Group, or Wendy's, for consideration of a brownfield redevelopment application on 66942 Grashit. The application proposes a brownfield redevelopment plan that would last seven years. It's very similar in nature to our Tifa. It uses a TIF to do tax increment financing to help pay back the owner of the property for costs incurred on the environmental cleanup. It's common for properties such as old industrial, intensive commercial, or old gas stations to use the brownfield legislation to make the environmental cleanup financially feasible in order to develop the property. Currently, the taxable value of the property right now is $88,300. They estimate that at the end of their completed project, it'll be in the neighborhood of $700,000. The taxes generated off that initial, the current taxable value, the, excuse me, $88,300, will go towards the city. So, we're not losing funding. It's just that we're postponing the taxes generated off the increase in value down the road in order to get a long-term gain. And so, as I know, council's familiar with our TIFs, it's kind of a similar tax, taxing tool, or economic development tool. And so, some of the projects that they'll undertake with the, with the funds are, they can use the money to pay back the evaluation process in the Phase II environmental that they had to do, asbestos abatement, transportation and disposal of contaminated soil, upgrades to the storm sewer so that no contaminants go into the storm sewer system, also the brownfield plan development and implementation and a certain amount of contingency. So, overall, the city planner and myself have looked at this plan. We've spoken to the county, who are supportive as well, and are recommending approval of the resolution.
Thank you. John, is there anybody here representing?
Yes, sorry. Kirk Pirschbacher, I'm gonna murder that name, so Kirk from Fishbeck and David from Meritage are.
Would you like to address council at this time?
Kirk Pirschbacher, Senior Brownfield Specialist with Fishback. Mayor, council members, thank you for entertaining this motion. I have David here with developer. Great project. City Manager did an excellent job just kind of laying out the nuts and bolts. It's really a property that needs redevelopment. It's been vacant for quite a while, has contamination, and this is a chance to get it redeveloped. Outside of acquisition, you're looking at almost $2 million in investment in the property, 30 to 40 full-time equivalent jobs, so it's a great boon for the area. And we're kind of here to answer any questions you guys have for us, if you have any.
We, our rules, we have a motion before that would happen. If there was anything else that either one of you would like to add before we do a motion?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-4, a resolution of support for the brownfield plan for the property located at 66942 Grashit Avenue.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Any discussion on this? And/or any questions for the petitioners? So, the idea here is that the, the act allows up to seven years, or B, this particular one we haven't dealt with before?
Right. And so, in their plan, they submitted this to the county and to the city, showing an estimated seven years to take, to recoup, or recoup their, their environmental cleanup costs.
Okay.
If it, it's seven years of whichever is less.
Okay.
If, if the true costs are less than what they put in the plan. If it's more, they do have the right to come back and request an extension, but that would have to come back through the same process. Kind of similar in nature to, I think, the program that we used with the Chrysler dealer in town. It's not an automatic that they could go beyond seven years. The, I think, in talking to Amanda from Planning and Economic Development at the county, they approve her for seven years. It required the applicant to come back and request any additional extension, but.
Is there an up to, like 10 years on some of the other ones that we have dealt with?
I think it's another.
Thirty.
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 The act allows up to.
A total of 30?
Yeah, just like our Tifa.
Okay.
Total of 30 years, but.
But in this case, they're paying something back where our Tifa is.
Right, yeah.
Not the same thing?
It's, yeah.
So, that's my concern is, is what determines what they're paying back and how much you pay back? So, in other words, here's why my concern is, is, you know, I think we have support for this, definitely. We'd like to see what's happening there and get rid of that, the ISAR that we've had there, way too many years. But if it's, is it, you can take seven years to pay it back, or is there a set amount that you have to pay back? Is there a minimum amount that you have to pay back? So, in other words, what I'm getting at is, could you be paying this off in five years and the city would, you know, see the taxes on the full $700,000?
Correct. Yeah, so what we've projected based off of the investment is what the post-construction taxable value will be. So, what we're using is kind of your worst-case scenario with a total of $159,000 in eligible activities. That includes contingencies and us maxing everything out. So, we've anticipated as seven years based off of the investment and the full cost. If they don't spend that 159, let's just hypothetically, let's say they, they only do 130 in reimbursement, it'll drop that to six years.
Okay.
So, it's, we're estimating seven, but it could be less.
Yeah.
So, we try to give you the worst-case scenario.
And it could be more.
Let's hope it's not.
Let's hope it's not.
No, but.
If it's more, they do have to come back.
They have to come back.
To get another resolution to the county board, and the county board would have to approve it based on input from the taxing authorities.
Yeah. And what goes along with this will be the development and reimbursement agreement, and that outlines, that'll state that the developer will get reimbursed for eligible activities incurred at seven years or earlier if done. So, that document will guide that and correct. If they need to go over that, it'll have to be amended.
Okay.
But we try to build in, we build it conservatively on the post-construction taxable value and aggressively on the, the number of activities, so that we typically shoot high.
Very good. Council, anything else? John, did I see in here that we also got some information, I believe is where I read this in the packet today, on the possibility of access through the Kroger?
Yes, they kind of gave us the timeline that was included in the packet.
Okay.
Along with the statement that they would be open to adding cross-connection, but at this time, they feel they've kind of tried everything they could.
Yeah.
In order to work on that.
So, it, in other words, the people we've dealt with that, that own the Kroger complex are not responding to, I talked about this at Planning Commission, I asked about this, and.
What appears from their input is that Kroger is not responding.
Okay.
Not the, not the property owner, but Kroger itself.
Okay, so why would Kroger have any say over and access when it's, the complex is?
Because they may have.
Something written into their lease?
Yeah, because they're, Kroger pays the taxes even though somebody else owns the property. It's all part of their agreement.
Okay.
So, they have control over.
They have control.
What goes into like that side retail business and.
There's no, there's no point in Marlin Properties talking?
They're both involved, and I'm not, everyone's kind of giving us their version of the events.
Uh-huh.
But at least it appears from what Meritage supplied, that it was Kroger seemed to be the less responsive of the two parties.
Okay. I think that's, you know, we've talked about that at Planning Commission especially, but we've talked about that, the access that we're looking for out of the Kroger parking lot, you know, relieving some of the pressure that we're gonna see on, on the new Wendy's there. And was hoping that we could see some action there. I don't know if there's anything else the council can do at this point to at least get some kind of communication between the, the parties?
We can continue to try.
Okay.
Both Troy and I have talked.
Tried.
I've talked to Fishback and Troy's talked to Marlin, so.
Okay, okay. All right, well, I hope things can work out there. Anything else? Troy, did you have anything that you wanted to add to this?
No, it's, Marlin Properties is willing to allow the connection, but they typically have to have Kroger sign off on it.
Okay.
And Kroger is notoriously bad corporate for responding to requests.
Okay. That's too bad. That's too bad. Okay. Anything else, council? Any comments from the public on this item? Be not? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two, consideration of special event request, Richmond Artisan and Farmers' Market. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to review a special event request from Melissa Matrazak of Flores Trash to Treasure to hold a artisan and farmer's market every Thursday from June 6th through October 3rd, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. each day, with the market being open from 8 to, or, I'm sorry, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. This year, there are two changes to the applicant's request, first being location and also the number of dates being requested. I'll, I'll start with the dates. As Melissa put in her letter and information provided to the city, most people are going there because they want the produce, and so the May events last year, it just wasn't ready. So, she's recommending that we don't start the market until June 6th rather than starting it in May. And then the second is the change of venue or location. The last two years, the market has been in the main municipal parking lot along Main Street, just behind the Veterans Park, and Melissa's recommending that we move it to the Forest Street parking lot, or the city-owned portion of the Forest Street parking lot. They would kind of block off the northern portion of the center aisle over to the edge of the, north edge of the parking lot, and just utilize the, that half of the city-owned portion. Those are the major changes. They also have discussed bringing in kind of smaller snack-type food vendors such as ice cream, lemonade, things like that. As Melissa puts together more information on that, we'll bring that back at a later date. She was still working on the list of vendors to submit with that request. So, other than that, I did meet with Melissa, go over everything that she had requested, and tried to put it into a background brief for city council, as well as a map showing the location. And Melissa's here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Melissa?
I also want to clarify, too. On your map, you'll see there's, I think it's four handicap spots that we would not utilize. So, those would remain as the handicap spots that they are. They're utilized quite a bit for kens, more than anything, I think, so we want to make sure that we leave those open. Part of our desire to make this move came last year when we had several vendors approach us, two of which are consistent farmers that come, had approached us when the lot was finished behind where my shops are. I was a little hesitant at first because of visibility, and started getting questions in the store, like, "It's a shame you can't grow the farmer's market." And I'm like, "What do you mean?" And they said, "We only have three vendors out there, because they're only seeing what's in front." Big reason that the farmers would like to see it move is because we have music out there. Most of the times with the traffic, you really can't hear him at all, and they think it would just create a better environment. Being at other markets and coming to this one, the difference in just the, the area and what it has to offer, they feel like it would be a little better being a little off Main Street rather than on it. John and I talked a little bit about signage. We do have our feather flags that we can put out at each corner, and then we'd like to possibly utilize, there's poles on each corner, how you guys have done the seasonal banners or bountings, whatever you want to call them. One that would just be super basic and have an arrow and say, "Richmond Farmers Market, Thursdays, from this time to that time." You know, we've also looked at some other options that we could put on the pole, similar to what DPW uses when there's a parade, that we could take down, up and down every week if that's more desirable. So, we've looked at a few options that way. Kind of a big reason we feel this is kind of a good time to take this leap is because we know that it won't be this year, but next year possibly, that that parking lot's gonna have some work done to it anyways. So, rather than stay consistent over there, it might be a nice time to jump and kind of give it that two years to see how things go across. Lauren and I both did take the market manager training through, yeah, through MiFTA, and found it very, very interesting. They did speak a lot about this kind of stuff and marketing yourself and, you know, how to grow your market. So, we were able to talk to, there was about 34 other market managers there, that we were able to speak and, and find out what their setups kind of were, how their contracts work. We shared a lot of information, so it was really a good thing in that way. And I was very happy to take Lauren along to get her as an assistant market manager. So, she will be that position this year, not just handling our social media. So, she's also a vendor at the market, so she's been with us kind of from day one. She does eggs and all that kind of stuff. And then John mentioned coming back to you guys at a later date. Part of that is, we want to make sure if, you know, local people want to make their kettle corn, that that's covered. We had a local lemon last year that came a couple times with our food vendors that we were allowed. We want to make sure that those types of vendors, we're not actually looking for food. I'm kind of, partly because I would like to do it behind us, and partly because food trucks are just getting harder and harder to get, and to have them actually show. They get a better gig and they just back out. So, you know, that's definitely part of the problem, too. So, but moving it across the street will have food much more readily available. And then the other reason is it just makes it easier on me to not have to cart stuff across the street every week and close my store. I close my store typically from about 1:00 on, on Thursdays. So, at least it would give me the ability to go out back, set up some barricades, go back in, and have some more flexibility in my own store.
Very good.
So.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request from Flores Trash to Treasures to hold the farmer's market on Thursday, June 6th until October 3rd, 2024, from 2:00 until 8:00 p.m. in the city-owned portion of the South Forest parking lot.
Motion's been made. Is there support?
For the sake of discussion, I'll support the motion.
Motion's been made and support. Discussion.
I'd like to see the farmer better state where it's at. Due to the parking lot's smaller, it's used by most of your businesses back there. It's always full. And you got more high visibility on the other side of the street than the municipal lot.
I tend to agree with you, John. I was back there today, City Manager on the other end of my phone looking at that and where it currently is at, and it just, the area, and it shows on the map that we got, it's about half the size of what is available right now. And I've got grave concerns about taking away the parking back there and putting this in its place on, on a Thursday. And being it's in the residential area there, the parking is, is pretty bad when the brewery has some of their events going on. It's a, it's a one-way only through there. And knowing what it does, living in, on the opposite side of Main Street, behind the parking lot there on Monroe, I see the number of cars that are involved, the people that come to see it. I just think that the parking that we have on the west side of Main Street is much better, and there's, and there's room for growth. If you wanted to grow this, there's no room, because we'd eliminate all city parking lot behind your store. The other thing is, is that Main Street, we have always wanted to see things on Main Street and, and create that excitement. And with the social district, we've got that approved now, and it's gone on to the state to get approval. This kind of throws a wrench in the deal. We want to see, including, you know, the farmer's market, we want to see what happens with the social district, you know, the positive effect that we hope that it has on all the businesses through there. Putting it back behind the stores on the, on the east side of Main somewhat kills half of the social district, in my opinion. And I don't want to see that, and I feel for you, and I understand Main Street is a quagmire for at least two hours, if not three hours there. And it creates its own problems right there. Maybe some signage would, definitely would help, where to tell people who are coming into the town maybe for the first time. But I'm afraid that the, not only the use of the, the north half of the parking lot, but where are all the vendors going to park?
Yeah, I would have my vendors park over in, on the other side of the street. So, that was, we've kind of already addressed. We've got our three farmers that would keep their vehicles, like they always have, because they need them for their stock.
Right.
But we'd have everybody else like we did at the beginning. They'd unload, set up, and move their vehicles across the street.
Okay, so across the street, the west.
The other municipal parking lot, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm gonna be a no on this. I just, I think it needs to be, remain where it's at now. I don't think the parking lot's gonna be a big issue, because that's just probably a grind and a, and a.
Yeah, that's what John had said.
Yeah, that can be done in a couple days, probably.
Probably a few weeks, a couple weeks, I think he said.
Oh, a couple days?
I mean, once they get to that point, there's a pole relocation and a driveway realigning and stuff.
Oh, there's, okay.
But, but the main, like, the resurfacing of the lot, yes, will be, you know, a few, a few days to mill and then repave.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
The project itself will last longer than that.
Yeah, the project. As far as the, affecting the farmer's market, there's no poles to move or anything else there, or are we doing?
There's, there's one pole to move to realign that driveway. If you, the driveway on Monroe Street, closest to Parker Street.
Okay.
When you look at the driveway, it lines right up with one of, half of it lines up with the parking stall instead of being where it should be. It was put, put in that way due to a power pole.
Yeah.
And so, we're needing to move that power pole.
Okay.
Internal to the parking lot, no, there's no.
There's no.
Pole relocation.
Yeah.
We're proposing to kind of spruce up that guardrail.
Uh-huh.
Like a planting bed, and then the masonry pillars with the decorative wrought iron fencing in between, like it's up in the Veterans Park, you know? So, those type of activities will certainly take longer.
Yeah.
But, but the actual milling and paving shouldn't take that long.
Yeah. This was discussed a little bit at our last Tifa meeting. There's a few Tifa board members here, and there's, Tifa supports the farmer's market and wants to do anything they can to help it, but there were some concerns at that table, if I'm correct me if I'm wrong, that's.
Same thing.
About the move.
Yeah.
That, that board also had. So, I just wanted to bring that ahead to the council, to this table tonight.
I, I have to just agree with the, the concern of the size of the parking lot. As the mayor stated, the proposed on South Forest is half the size of what is being utilized now. And if the market, you know, continues to grow, which is, you know, the hope, I just don't see how the vendors will be accommodated, not to mention the food trucks, when you do come back with the food trucks. I just don't really see how there would be enough space without imposing on the businesses that are directly behind. I would just hate to see their parking be affected for their customers.
Although, I do think it would help their customer base more, because people don't cross the street as much as you think they do, because we are there at the busiest time of traffic in the day.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and then the other concern is the environment that we're trying to create with the farmer's market, to get families that linger and listen to the music and stay. And I don't feel like they do that as much as they would if it was in a quieter setting.
Yeah.
So, I understand that your position, what it is, but I also, you know.
Understood, yeah. We completely understand. We just don't.
I don't have a problem with the dates, hours, and the only thing I have a problem is moving to the other location. I think it should stay right where it's at, where you hide and build it from there.
Anything else at the table? Any audience participation on this item? Again, I ask that you come up to the podium, state your name and address. You got about three minutes. I'll give you three and a half.
[laughing].
I know how you go sometimes.
I'm Lois Sprudy, 36642, Amanda Court, Richmond. I've been a resident of this lovely community for 37 years now. I love our small town, and I agree with you. I would like to see the market stay in its current location. It is in the heartbeat of our city. I have done a lot of promoting on my social media, and a lot of my customers have come as far away as Royal Oak, Ann Arbor, Clarkston, Ferndale, because they know where I'm going to be with my items. Last year, due to my health, I was not able to be at the market as often. I had blood pressure things due to a daughter's wedding, but that's all good now. So, I am, you know, I would like to be a part of the market, but I'm very strong, I really feel we have the visibility. And as far as crossing on Main Street, I know we've got the area where they come out. Is it possible to get one of, I've been in other communities where they have a state highway where they, they're supposed to stop, but that's a crosswalk. Can we get one of those yellow signages from the state that says, "You must stop for pedestrians"? Would that help? Because, you know, people do want to check out the other stores. We've got lovely shops on Main Street and off Main Street. I'm very proud of our community and how far it has come, but, I mean, they could get a bite to eat at Chat, or Commercial House, you know, and go into Melissa's two stores, but crossing is an issue. But the original parking lot, like you stated, is much larger and. But, the original parking lot, like you stated, is much larger and it's our focal point. We've got the Veterans Park there and that park means a lot to me. I have a son who's a Marine veteran. So, that's all. See, I was quick.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to address the city council at this time? Rich?
Rich Weinert, 70007 Main Street. I just wanted to add that I think the farmer's market has been a real plus to the downtown and my wife has a store on that block. And I've seen young families pushing strollers to make their way over to the market. It just seemed like it just comes alive because most of the time, there's not much foot traffic going around the stores. So, I just wanted to thank Melissa and everybody who's been working on it for, you know, having the farmer's market.
Thank you. Anybody else? And I'm not going to give you six minutes for the two of you, so.
My name's Brianna Laporte, this is Harper Laporte. We're owners of Commercial House. I'm not really for against wherever the farmer's market goes. I do like seeing it on Main Street. It is cool. If it does move, my only concern is parking because whenever that parking lot shut down, everyone utilizes Commercial House parking lot and then we don't have anywhere for the customers to park. So, my main concern is if it does move, find some way to make sure that they're not parking. I don't know what I could do or what the city could do, but that's my biggest concern is I would lose all my parking because I know people will park there. It's just what they do whenever it's shut down. So, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. Teresa Maniachi, 69227 Main Street, 690001 Main Street. I think I'd like to see it in the same location that it is, that I think that's what its purpose was, to bring more enhancement to the town, which it has and we've done a great job of growing it. So, I think keeping it there to keep the, the shops for Shabby Pig and Green Time and all those along there, it keeps them looking forward to something because it really has created a lot more activity on that night. So, I'd like to see it stay. Thanks.
Anybody else? Back to the table. Any comments, council?
I just have a comment. When I originally saw this and read through it, it seemed to make sense to move it just to, for all the reasons that were stated, but after thinking about it and hearing the discussion, I tend to agree. I don't want to be going back and forth, try it there and if it doesn't work, then go back. I think we're really trying to have that be the focus where people coming in from out of town will be able to easily find it. I know the signs will help and everything, too, but it's, it'll catch people's attention because when you go by, you see that there's activity there and it's easy to do. And I know, see a lot of comments on social media, they're looking for a farmer's market. And I think this will, we'll be able to promote it more by having it there and being able to expand in the future. So, I originally, and I supported the motion for discussion. I was originally for it, but I, I think I'm going to vote against it just for all the reasons. Keep it in the same location.
There's nothing else? We vote on the motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Against?
Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Nays have it. Does the council wish to make another motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the special event request from Floris Trash Treasures to hold the farmer's market on Thursdays from June 6th until October 3rd, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM in the city-owned municipal lot, Veterans Park on Main Street.
Support.
What's been made and support, discussion? I think we've had quite a bit of discussion already, but I'll open it back up again. Melissa, looks like council wants to see it stay where it's at. Are you still going to run it?
As far as right now, yeah.
We appreciate that. We'll take a look at it through the year and just see just where we're at with this. I think we're more in fair to, to take a look at some of the issues that you brought up and maybe even work on a couple for this year's event. I think we might be able to do something. I've had one councilman bring up a, a great idea, possible crossing guard to help get people across Main Street with the possibility of that happening. So, that's, we'll be talking on that, I believe, somewhere along the line here, well before your market owns up, probably at maybe our next roundtable meeting. We could put that on the agenda to discuss that.
Yes, and certainly I know when I met Melissa, there was talk on some of the vegetation that's in that planting bed there is 20 years old, so.
Yeah.
It's taller than me.
We talked about that today.
So, a lot of times, we're going back and looking at some of that vegetation that's been put in. It served its purpose when it first put in, but 20 years later, it's a little larger than what was intended. So, we may remove some of that, put some of the types of plant materials that we put on the parking lot behind, behind yours. And then also, just because we're not moving the location, Melissa, when Melissa and I talked, we talked about some of the seasonal banners being switched to farm market banners, things along those lines. We can, we can look at even potentially, you know, across the road banner that could be put up a couple of times a year. We could look at a whole number of those things to try and, and, and help with the marketing as well as some of the business owners here that I know have a social media presence, helping by sharing your posts and stuff to, you know, whatever we can all do, working collectively. I think, as Rob mentioned, our Tifa pays for the portage on that's there during the summer. We help pay for the, the existing temporary sign, you know? And so, there's other things that maybe we can all do working together to make it more successful.
With that being said, too, I'd like to reiterate what Lois said, and I've come to counsel with that before. We need some crossing signage, not just for the market, but for all the days. It is near to impossible. My 76-year-old mom can hardly cross the street to get to Shabby Pig to shop because people don't stop and they come out of nowhere. So, I know that it's a hesitation to put signage like that up, but there are several communities with some lighted, when people are in the crossing guards, you know, it flashes around that crossing sign to let people know, "You need to stop." Something, we need something desperately.
Council's addressed it the last year a couple of times at our study meetings and stuff that we've had, and it came back the last time around that it's a false sense of security if you put those up in the little that we have. If you've got cars parked on both sides of the road, you know, take a look at St. Clair, how wide that is, and they have those signs up so that you can easily walk across and it says, "Stop" and everything. But you can see people coming out to walk across. Our Main Street, I mean, you're afraid to open your door all the way open because it's so narrow. The one thing we don't want to see happen is M.D. coming in here and say, "No on-street parking any longer in your downtown." They threatened that years ago for us, and that was one of the reasons we have the municipal parking lot on the west side, is say, "Hey, we're going to put this here just in case they pull the plug on it." We don't have the control on Main Street. They do, and, and usually they work with us. But to do something like that, we thought when we put the bumpouts out, it would slow, it's, they were supposed to slow traffic down and...
It doesn't.
It's better. You're only crossing two lanes now instead of four because of the parking lanes, but still, it's, you take your, it's just the way it is. It's these aggressive drivers today and everybody's in their own little world when they're driving in their cars.
Maybe a better police presence might help?
Pardon me?
Maybe a better police presence at our end of town might help if we can?
That's what was, in a conversation that I had with one of the councilmen, they brought that idea up, was that maybe we could some, get our reserve officers in. The chief's always been very accommodating when we have special events. Every Thursday, there's an expense involved there, but that's something that we can all take a look at and see if there's a possibility there, if we can do that. Now, you've got somebody out there in a uniform and, and I'm sure something, you know, something else to stop cars. You know, it's hard enough for our, our people we have to move the kids around in the morning and at the end of school. They have a hard enough time with all the different things that we have given them and the flashing lights and everything else. It's a, like you said, it's very dangerous in our downtown trying to cross Main Street with all of the turn, you know, the blocks are so short, people turning in, people trying to parallel park, you know, and don't know how and stopping traffic completely. And just the way the light is done, you know, at 32, which again is out of our control. Yeah, there's a lot of problems and we've tried to address those. But having just those signs out there, it's a false sense of security and we all felt that.
I would ask that you guys definitely just keep looking.
Yeah, we are.
We need the help, for sure.
Absolutely. We want to see things better, you know? We'd like to have that magic wand and, yeah. So, anyhow.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Anybody else? Back to the table? Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
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 Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of RAG's long-term amendment. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving an amendment to the Richmond area historical and genealogical society's long-term plan. The plan was originally approved in 2012 and amended in 2017 to include the property purchased across from Bailey Park. The new plan included a vintage gas station, Red Barn General Store, and a building that looked like a horse stable. As RAGs has thought about the stable building, they've come to a conclusion that they would like to change that out for more of a agricultural museum that would be based on a scaled-down version of the building that was at the old farmer's elevator on Main Street. The city manager met with Rich Weinert and Bob Colehagen regarding the project. I also met with Bob out at the site previous to that. And then Bob made a presentation at this year's annual dinner for RAGs, kind of going over this change. They then have approved it. The minutes of that approval are in the, in the packet, along with the revised plan. And Rich and Bob are here tonight to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Would either one of you or both of you like to make a presentation?
If, if you look through the packet, basically, as John explained, we had designated that area, I guess would be to the west of the Red Barn, to be a horse shed kind of building to store historic farm equipment. And we, RAGs has received a donation of a large collection of horse-drawn farm equipment that has come from Bob Colehagen and his family. So, we, it's still at his, in storage, and we needed a place to put it. Our barn is pretty much full already, so that's why we wanted to adjust this, to make it a more of a museum to store that sort of equipment. I'll turn it over to Bob. He can explain what...
Well, I, I came up with the original design and then took it to set in stone and they came up with this proposal. It's basically patterned after the farmer's elevator. It basically gives us a two-story building in the same footprint that we had before. And the lower section will be completely open with a handicap accessible bathroom, which is one thing I think we needed over there. So, that's where that stands.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Richmond area historical and genealogical society's long-term plan amendment to include the new design for the agricultural museum building.
Support.
What's been made and support, discussion? Any questions? See, it's pretty much the same footprint. I like the idea. That, that farmer's elevator was a main staple that made this town. The farmers that came in every, you know, every day, certain times of the year, just packed Main Street even when I was a kid. And it just, they went to our restaurants, they did everything. The families came into town, bought things. I mean, it was, it was a great time in Richmond. And I think this will be a great addition to the historical park. Nothing against the, the original design, but I think this represents our community much better and where we started, you know? And we still have one here, more modern, of course, but we still have an elevator here. So, we are still in the midst of a farming community in the area, and I think this is the right thing to do, like the, like the drawings and everything.
Yeah, sure.
Anything else, council? Any audience comments? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
You bet. Thank you. Item number four is consideration of approving resolution 2024-5, special event request, Memorial Day Parade. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request to conduct the annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 27th, beginning at 10:00 AM. This will be the fourth year that Tim Rick has coordinated the parade and ceremony. The parade will line up in Bailey Park and Beebe Street Park, right there at Beebe and Washington, and will travel down Washington to Maine where it'll head south. Once it passes the Veterans Park there, the street will remain closed for that one block while the ceremony is conducted.
Thank you, sir. Is it, uh, let's see, is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-5, which directs the city clerk to apply to the Michigan Department of Transportation to close M-19 on Monday, May 27, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM for the purpose of conducting the annual Memorial Day Parade.
Support. What's been made and support? Any discussion on this item? I have my speaker all ready. I, we have the VFW has got their flag bearers all ready to go. And John's end, I think we've already talked about it, it's early this year. We're, we're way ahead of schedule on everything. So, it, after you retire from softball for 41 years, it's, gives you time to do things a little earlier instead of being frantic. We have a great speaker in our state representative and Richmond veteran, Jamie Green, will be speaking this year, and she promises to keep it to the point and short, so. Anyhow, looking forward to good weather for that day. It's, last year was amazing on Main Street, the number of people that were out there. And we have a new speaker system this year, so everybody will be able to hear everything that's going on. We had that at Christmas and it was so much better for people and you see about the same crowd out there as we had for Christmas, so.
We'll talk, we rented that system.
Oh, did we rent that?
Yeah.
Oh, we were going to buy one.
So.
We didn't buy one.
Uh, we were renting it to see how it worked and then, but we can, we can look into that.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm sorry, John, I thought we went ahead and did that. Okay. Okay. Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have a second motion for the wreaths.
I make a motion to authorize the purchase of three wreaths to be placed at the Richmond Cemetery, St. Michael Cemetery, and the Veterans Memorial.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion on this item? Any audience participation on this item? These are the wreaths that go to three different locations in our community. Back to the table? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of special event request, odd wrestling event. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider a request from Saving Destiny Animal Rescue to utilize the odd for a wrestling event to raise money for the animal rescue on June 15th, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM, with the performance going from approximately 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Doors would open to the public at 6:00 PM. The 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM provides for adequate time for ring setup and teardown. I've been meeting with Will Trombley on the event, and he is proposing to utilize city championship wrestling to handle the promoting and operations of the event. There's a letter from both Saving Destiny and CCW owner Paul Murray in your packet, and then in your background brief for kind of all the details that Will has submitted with his letter. And he's here tonight. If you have any questions?
Will, come up and make your presentation, please.
And while he's coming up, I did need to mention that normally this would go through as a first-time event, go through rec to then here due to the timing of the request. And then we don't have an April rec board meeting and the new... and then we don't have an April rec board meeting and the need to kind of lock in the promoter. We brought it directly to the council.
Very good.
Thank you. My name is William Trombley, 69273 North Main. We, me and my wife own Green Time Workshop. I'm, and I would like to thank the mayor and the council for this time. I'm representing Saving Destiny, they're an animal rescue that works with dogs with cancer. We got our dog with cancer and got Adam Fix from, from there, to hold a fun, fundraising wrestling promotion at, at the Odd. The show, as, as the city manager stated, would, would be run by CCW. They hold shows at Lance Cruz High School. Mr. Stocker is the point of contact there, and they do take great care to mitigate the risk of the parquet floors and such, and they can keep the, the action in the ring if needed, of course. Action has happened, sorry. And there's that. I did an informal poll of local business owners and residents at Kroger and such, and everyone seemed to be pretty positive. There was a lot of discussion about bringing things to Ri- Richmond. We've owned Green Time on Main for about four years, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of reason to stop. So we got to get people to stop, and I think if bringing wrestling fans to a family-friendly envir- event, it, the price point we're looking at is about 15 to $35, depending on the seat. We don't plan on selling alcohol at the event. Like I said, we do want to make it a friendly for family to have a good time. I've been to five of their shows, and for $10, I'm thoroughly entertained for three hours. And I think that's it right now.
Okay, hang on just a second.
Yes, sir, of course.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Saving Destiny's Animal Rescue for nonprofit usage of the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium for a wrestling event to raise money for animal rescue on June 15, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., with the performance going from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion or questions of Mr. Trombley? Yes, I have one. I thought I underlined it here, but maybe I didn't, Will.
Yes, sir.
If you will, just hang in a minute for me here. I had a question about, I think, yeah, I think it was about cleanup is the only consideration that, or concern that I didn't see. Anyhow, you were talking about possibly food vendors?
Yes, yes, sir.
And is, have you talked with Margot about that, or, or John about?
Briefly.
Okay.
Briefly, and that was, I was going to bring up, there would be further discussions on logistics, because this is a first time of this sort of event at the Odd, so there will be a lot of discussions for items, I'm sure, that come up. And Margot and her team have been fabulous.
Okay, good. I have concerns personally about bringing outside food in. I believe, did I read that you were trying to get some local people?
I was, sir.
Possibly to do things.
Yes, sir. I talked to Commercial House. I'm, I'm planning on it.
Okay.
I want to do, of course, get, get y'all's feed, feedback on it. If they're unable to, you know, we could, we were thinking with like, like Little Caesar's, the local franchise, or Hungry Howie's, or someone local. I want to use all local businesses. I already reached out to the Chamber for assistance, and I talked to Elizabeth over there, and they're, they're able to help promote the event. We're, we're thinking, usually their shows draw about 400 people, and depending on how I fundraise, we might be able to get like WWE people you've heard of. So that would be phenomenal.
Parking, when you, when you talk about that many people.
Yes, sir.
Evidently, it's going to be spillover parking. Has Ball Equipment, is there, have you talked to them at all yet?
Haven't talked to anybody yet. I was waiting for y'all.
Yeah.
I didn't want to jump any guns.
Yep.
And so once, if it's approved, I would go to Ball, talk with Margot about other options for parking. We do have the lot behind our store, which is a nice walk. If this event is successful, which I'm hoping it is, we would like to do more events like that, not necessarily a fundraising event, you know. Maybe during the summer, actually hold a wrestling event in the parking lot behind our store, so we can get more involvement. We're down by the Kmart at the other end to help some of those businesses draw something down in Muttonville.
Good, good. Anything, any questions? Okay, any audience participation on this item? Back to the table? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck.
Thank you very much, y'all.
Thank you. And our final item is consideration of special event request, Richmond Knights of Columbus procession. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond Knights of Columbus, Council 2667, to conduct a procession on Sunday, April 7th, to celebrate the St. Augustine Mass and have a breakfast presentation after the Mass. To kind of keep the tradition, they plan on lining up on Howard Street, walking, utilizing the sidewalk to walk down to, along Main to Howard, and really are coming to us because they would like assistance from our police department, so that when they cross at the light there at Howard, they can all get across at once versus a few of them get across, and then the light changes, and then a few more. So really, up until that point, they don't need our assistance that off, that much, but I'm, I'm sure we'll have police there anyway. But then, really the main focus of the request is to get them across Main Street to the church.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the requests received from the Richmond Knights of Columbus, Council 2667, to conduct their 82nd annual Tri-District Rally procession on Sunday, April 7, 2024, beginning at approximately 8:15 a.m. on the north side of Main Street, Grand Truck Parking Lot, and proceed east toward Howard Street, crossing in unison at the traffic light at Howard and Main to the St. Augustine Church.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this? Michael, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Mayor. As you can see in the background brief, I was the one who put in the request. I was approached, I'm a Knights of Columbus member, and I was approached about what do we have to do to make sure that it's safe and awareness so that people are seen, you know, there could be up to 100 people walking on the sidewalk, and just to, you know, get some police assistance if needed, just mainly to get across the street. Talking about, well, let's just have everybody wait, you know, for the cycle of the light, but.
They're six-second lights.
So it'll be, be a long time. Talked with the city manager about that, so, said, okay. So I, I put the request in, and just mainly to keep it safe, and people are aware that there's going to be additional traffic and people walking on a Sunday morning. So there's, so hopefully, hopefully I can answer any questions. But this happens, as you see, there's a number of communities that are involved, other Knights of Columbus councils, so they rotate on a, on a, on an annual basis, and the last time we had it here for Richmond was at least 12 years ago. And I think probably at that time, it probably was Art Hable that probably submitted the request to do that, so, anyway.
Is this, I remember many years ago, when the Knights of Columbus did the walk, they were dressed in their regalia. Is that how this is going to be?
Yeah, there'll be.
It's a parade and?
It's a, yeah, it's just a, yeah, it's a.
People will be dressed in the Knights of Columbus?
Yes, there are certain members that are part of what they call the Fourth Degree.
The Fourth Degree?
Yeah, and then they're the ones that.
It was, it's early in the morning, but it's, it's pretty, pretty neat to watch.
Yeah. They'll also be carrying, since there's 14 different councils, they'll have their own banner, which is, I don't know about this, by this, you know, that identifies where they came from. So it's just a family-friendly event and more for fellowship and worship together. And then afterwards, we're going over to Maniachi's to, where I guess the count today was like.
I thought maybe they'd eat first and then walk it off all the way back to say.
They did mention today, there was like 200 people.
Yeah, 200 people.
Is that right? No kidding. Wow, that's great. That's great, that's great. You guys are hosting that, that's a lot of work. Yeah, very good. Okay, anything else at the table? Anything from public comments? On, on the way back here, anything? All in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We hope for great weather that day. Okay, we move on to Ms. Lady Spanish from the City Manager. Sir?
The Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant applications were due tonight at 11:59 p.m. I did, I did it in early, earlier this afternoon. So I've been working, lining up letters of support from state representatives, SEMCOG, County Commissioner, the Detroit Autism Society that was here the other night, kind of gave us a very nice recommendation, and then just lining up all the different elements, even though we had submitted many of these elements of this grant through our Spark Grant application, so I had like kind of the framework. There was still, each grant requirements are a little different, so there's, you know, little nuances that I had to update. So, but it did go in today, we got confirmation from the state, so we'll keep our fingers crossed and hopefully positive outcome there.
Thank you. I know it took a lot of work on your part there. Okay, council comments. Michael?
Just glad to see all the items that we have for consideration today. They're all really good things that are enhancing the city and bringing, bringing different groups together. Nice to see the participation from the local businesses and everybody, so good discussion, so, thanks.
Dennis?
Great, nothing.
Rob?
All set.
John?
All set.
Emily?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Back to me. April 1st today, we have our first day of yard waste collection. We'll start tomorrow, Tuesday, and not to be confused, that's at both ends of town. Otherwise, we have north-end recycling also Tuesday. So that, that runs through into fall each week.
Through, through October, yeah.
Okay, and then we have a library board meeting at 5:30 on the 8th at the Lois Wegner Memorial Library. Plan Commission will meet on the 11th. I don't know that we have a BZA? No, okay, so Plan Commission will meet on the 11th at 7 o'clock right here at City Council, and two weeks from tight, tonight will be our next regular city council meeting. Is that also, I don't have it on this calendar, but is that also our first?
It'll be our first public.
Yeah, so at 5:30 on the 15th, council will have its first budget workshop, which is open to the public, will be held right here at City Hall also. We will meet at 5:30 and more than likely break and do our regular council meeting at 7:00, and then again, if need be, go back into our study session on the budget after that, right here, all at City Council. We have a few things here. Gee, we got quite a few things.
Yeah, you got a list.
Let's see, maybe we can get through some of these. No, doesn't look like we got some new stuff. Spring books and Morris sale, April 17 through 20. Questions, library, 727-2665. Again, the library has a community food bank. They're collecting perishable canned goods through today, starting today through April 26. Again, questions on that, 727-2665. The solar eclipse, I think it's a week from tomorrow, isn't it, or a week from today? April 8th, from 2:45 to 3:45, go to our library on 32 Mile Road. It's ages five and up. It's limited to the first 40 participants, and yeah, they're going to have eclipse glasses, and you'll be able to use other viewing devices to watch the eclipse. If weather is poor, they will have live footage inside the Lois Wegner Memorial Library. So that's for the eclipse, and that's on April 8th. Summer employment opportunities in the city of Richmond. The Recreation Department, from late May to late July, seasonal positions include camp counselors. You must be 18 years or older. Applications are online at cityofrichmond.net, or stop over Monday through Thursday on Festival Drive to the Community Center. Babysitting Beyond the Basics, Saturday, May 18th or Tuesday, July 23rd. That starts at 9:00 a.m. It's for ages 10 and older. There is a fee. Again, I believe that's through our Parks and Rec. More information on that, Babysitting Beyond the Basics, 727-3064. Adult pickleball has gotten really big, at the Odd especially. There is a beginner-to-intermediate league that is now forming. It's going to be a round-robin style of league play. Again, this is for beginners to intermediates. There's a three-game guarantee each night, and your partner changes, so you can't send any, whatever you call them.
Riggers?
Riggers, yeah. You call them ringers in pickleball?
I don't know.
Yeah, you do know, yeah. So that's Wednesdays, April 3rd through May 15th, 5 to 8 p.m., $45 a player. Again, that's put on by our Parks and Rec, 727-3064, if any questions. And the, the famous perennial exchange is Saturday, May 18th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. sharp in the Beebe Street Park gazebo. You can bring stuff and you can take stuff. For best trading time, they say 9:15 a.m. sharp. Again, that is Saturday, May 18th, Perennial Exchange. That covers them. Last month, we didn't do anything, and this month, they gave us all that. Must have watched the council meeting, and we harassed them last month about not having anything for the first time in a long time. Is there any other business of the city council? John?
I just misspoke on the yard waste. I think I mentioned it's through October, it's actually through November.
Through November.
Yep, and then along with the DNR grant, I did work with Teresa Maniachi to submit a small grant through the greater metropolitan area of Realtors for bike racks at the Odd and Desert Storm Memorial. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that one, too.
And we thank you, Teresa, for your time in that. They're back there gabbing, she's not even hearing me. Okay, is there any other business in the city council at this time? If not?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Motion has been made and supported. There's no discussion on the motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thanks for being with us today. Appreciate it.